Okay, I call this meeting to order and I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular June 1st meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. For anyone who wishes to join us, there are lengthy instructions on how to join the Zoom on page 2 of our agenda. One caveat is that if you plan on listening through something other than Zoom, you may be listening about 30 seconds behind, so I recommend anyone who wishes to comment either be listening through the phone or Zoom so that they aren't 30 seconds late to comment. I would now like everyone to join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and just as for all.
Okay, can we please begin with a roll call attendance, please?
Here.
Noah Levy. Commissioner Landry?
Here.
Commissioner Mulder?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Present.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Okay, a quorum being present. I will now ask if there are any agenda modifications.
We have no modifications to the agenda. We would just point out that there is, are supplementals on your dais tonight. There is a letter relative to the Enchanted Forest LLC and there, well, I think there's a couple of letters there. And then there is a report from an engineer geologist relative to the groundwater well.
All right. That brings us to the point in our agenda that we reserve for public comments on non-agenda items. Anytime people appear before this commission, they may speak on any matter pertinent to the commission's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Is anyone here in the audience here to speak on items not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will look at the participants on Zoom and seeing none, that will bring us to closing public comment on non-agenda items. And now to our consent agenda. Everything on the consent agenda are matters that are routine in nature and usually approved by a single vote. The chair will poll the audience and members of the commission to determine if any item on the consent agenda should be polled for public comment or further discussion. First item, number one, review and approval of the March 2nd, 2023 action summary. Does anyone here wish to have that pulled? I would point out that there are several corrections that need to be made and I will work directly, they're mostly just consistency, getting people's names wrong and nothing that would change the substantive nature of the minutes. So, I don't need to pull it, I'll just discuss it with Laura directly. Item two, review and approval of the May 18th, 2023 action summary. Is there any commissioner or member of the public who would like to have this item pulled? Okay, the same, the same comment pertains to number two as well. Number three, Cali's Finest Gardens LLC conditional use permit in the Bridgeville area. This is something that staff's recommendation is to continue the project to July 6, 2023 at the request of CDFW. Does anyone wish to speak to the continuance?
Just to this continuance and the other, I think there's two others. I cannot be present at that July 6, unfortunately, so.
Okay, noted. So that will stay on consent as well. Item four is another continuance to July 6, 2023 at the request of CDFW. Anyone wish to speak to this continuance? Seeing none, that will stay on consent. Item five, New Earth Farms LLC special permit in the Willow Creek area. Again, this item is continued at the request of staff to July 6, 2023. Anyone like to speak to this continuance? Commissioners, public, Zoom? Okay. Item six, Enchanted Forest LLC conditional use permit in the Willow Creek area. Does anyone wish to pull this item?
Yes.
Okay, we have several commissioners and number six will be considered separately. Item seven, the NAPIC Zone Reclassification in the Honeydew area. Does anyone wish to have this one considered separately and not part of the consent agenda? Nope, seeing none, that will stay on consent. And number eight, the Oryx Community Services District Tank Replacement Project Coastal Development Permit, Conditional Use Permit, and General Plan Conformance Review and Special Permit in the Oryx area.
I just have a comment disclosure. I'm pretty familiar with this project because many years ago I was on the design team for the Oryx Community Service District Water System, including these tanks. And I guess I'm dating myself, including a tank that's being removed or replaced.
You're not part of the current project?
I am not.
Nor do you have a financial interest?
I do not.
In the district?
I do not.
Okay, so thank you for that statement.
I have a quick, I just have a quick question to staff. We only received one comment on this particular item, correct? Is that?
That is correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so that will stay on consent. So, the only item in numbers one through eight that will be considered separately is number six. So I would ask my fellow commissioners if there's no further discussion, if I could please get a motion.
I move to pass all items on consent except for item number six.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mulder and a second by Commissioner West. All in support, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. That brings us now to items pulled from consent. We'll just take a minute and let staff get situated.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Megan Osobedo and I'm the assigned planner for Enchanted Forest LLC's Conditional Use Permit application located in the Willow Creek area. The image on the left shows the location for Enchanted Forest LLC and its proximity to Willow Creek. The project is located southeast of Willow Creek and is bordered by Trinity County. The image on the right shows the access route from Willow Creek to the project site. The access route goes through Trinity County and the project site is accessed from Forest Route 5N03 from South Fork Road from State Highway 299. The applicant has submitted a road evaluation report which states that South Fork Road is maintained by Trinity County. As the access route goes through Trinity County and utilizes a U.S. Forest Service route, the project was referred to both the Trinity County Planning Department and the U.S. Forest Service. No comments were received by either agency. The applicant and up to three employees will be utilized for operations on site and a maximum of 10 vehicle trips are anticipated per day. The applicant has stated that the access road is developed to the equivalent of a road category four standard and as the site is for pre-existing activities, no increase in traffic is anticipated. The applicant is applying for a conditional use permit to permit 28,348 square feet of outdoor cannabis cultivation with 2,840 square feet of ancillary propagation. Water will come from a permitted well that is located on the adjacent parcel north in Trinity County. There is a water and river access agreement that has been recorded with Humboldt County's Recorder's Office which allows the shared use of four wells located on four separate parcels. The applicant has obtained a well assessment from licensed hydrogeologist Bonnie Lampley with Lawrence and Associates which determined that the use of the well will not adversely affect nearby surface water features and estimates an annual recharge rate of 352 acre-feet or 114.7 million gallons per year. There is a total of 10,000 gallons of existing water storage on-site, 2,500 gallons of which is designated for fire suppression only. Power will come from one 2,000-watt Honda EU generator and the applicant is proposing to obtain an ag drop with PG&E through an existing power pole on-site. The applicant is required to obtain 100% of power from PG&E or other on-site 100% renewable energy source. Drying will occur on-site and trimming will occur off-site at a licensed processing facility. The applicant and up to three employees will be utilized for operations. Public comment was received by the president of Riverwatch in Willow Creek. The public comment included concerns about the project's proximity to the South Fork Trinity River and the use of fertilizers. The applicant has enrolled in the state water board's general order for waste discharge requirements and water quality and there is a site management plan on file that addresses site management for potential discharge. This concludes my presentation and myself and staff are available for questions.
So can you go over what staff looks at when it makes the determination whether or not there's sufficient water storage in the scope of how much water they are using?
As the well was determined to be groundwater and not to affect nearby surface waters, no additional storage is technically required. So the 10,000 gallons of existing storage is considered sufficient for the project with the well assessment report.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Has there been any attempt to test the water in the creek to see if there is any discharge currently? Because you said this is an existing grow.
It is an existing grow. They haven't cultivated in a couple of years, but it is for a pre-existing cultivation site and there has not been any testing that I know of in the river.
Could there be a condition that that happens if this is licensed? Because, you know, I know in a previous job, we tested creeks and probably 11 out of 13 were contaminated. So if that should occur after it's permitted, then there needs to be some sort of mitigation to stop that. Either, I don't know what kind of fertilizers they use and I don't know if there's something they can use instead of what they use that would not contaminate the creek.
Well, through the chair, I think what I would offer is that if there was runoff that was making its way from the site to the river, that would be a violation of the water board's requirements. We may be able to add a condition for testing. I think what we need to be really careful about is that there may be, if there is contamination, it might be hard to trace it back to any particular site, especially given the proximity to Trinity County where we don't have any control over.
Well, then if that's the case, then why are we allowing them at all? I mean, there would have to be, is there others above them? Is that what you're saying? That could possibly also be contaminating? I mean, then maybe you need to go back and try to figure out which one of or how many of them are doing the contamination. I mean, it's really serious because then that fertilizer gets in the river and then you get the algae blooms and, you know, it's not healthy.
Correct. We don't have any control over what's happening in Trinity County, unfortunately. Now, the water board does and, you know, any runoff, again, that's going into, that's leaving the site would be a violation of the water board's general order.
But if you're not monitoring it, then how, you know, you can say that, but if you're not monitoring it, then it's just going to happen.
We will be monitoring the site and inspecting to make sure that erosion control measures are in place and other measures to control runoff.
Could you just? I think if I could, just maybe to help clarify, I think what Mr. Johnson is trying to, trying to say is that we could add a condition to go out and detest it. And we could go out and find the test and have the test done. And if there were some, there's two problems with that. One is you have to know what you're testing for because there are thousands of different things that could possibly be found. So we could take a step forward and say, okay, what are the things that you're using on the site and test for those things? If, if those were found, but yet he's complying with all the requirements to prevent water from being able to surface flow into the stream and everything is being done correctly, it would be really hard to prove that that contamination is from this site. Another thing I just would like to add and confirm what Mr. Johnson said is that, and maybe this isn't right, but the water board is the one that has jurisdiction over the water quality impacts. So that's something that they monitor for and do. If it's the decision of the planning commission to want to start to require testing of all these sites after the fact, that's something that we could certainly look at, but there are limitations there. It's not that if we go out and find a spike that is immediately attributable to this particular site because we frankly won't know where it came from.
Do you think that this particular project is, I don't know what the right word is? I mean, we have approved a lot of projects that are probably close to creeks before and even close to the river. I know, pretty close to the river. But we haven't had anyone like the Riverwatch really step up and say, there's a problem. So why do you think this one's more of a problem than some of the other ones that we've looked at? Or is it just that they're more concerned?
Sometimes it's awareness. You know, I don't know why Riverwatch suddenly stepped up and made a comment on this one. But obviously, the state, several state agencies and the county really don't want to see any contaminated effluent or runoff going into the, into surface waters or groundwater. We absolutely don't want to see that. That is why as part of this, there is a preliminary water quality plan demonstrating all the things that they're going to do to prevent surface water from flowing directly into, or runoff from flowing directly into surface water.
Thank you, Director. I'd like to now recognize Commissioner Mulder.
So, I just want to make sure that we don't dive too far off the process. From my understanding is we have the report. Commissioners asked for clarifications as far as the report and then we opened up public comment, which has always started off with the applicant getting the opportunity. I just don't, I have a lot of things I want to deliberate about and speak, but I'm trying to hold back on that because I just want to clarify. I believe right now is just where we ask for clarifications and the reports provided are questions about that.
That's correct. We're still in the questions for staff phase. Are there any additional questions for staff before we turn it over to public comment? Okay, seeing none, I would now like to invite the applicant or the applicant's agent to step up to the lectern and speak if they so choose. And the three-minute time limit does not apply to you, so try and keep it under 15, please.
Thank you. I don't really have anything specific other than the issues that have already been brought to the table. I do have other agriculture projects in that area that are not cannabis and so it would be very difficult to determine, for example, whether two acres of vegetables would contribute anything compared to a quarter acre, half acre, or three quarters, or whatever the cannabis happens to be. And additionally, Trinity County, the way that the water flows, it comes directly from Trinity County into proximity of the garden and then goes towards South Fork of the Trinity. There is another 10,000 square feet that's closer to the river, right adjacent to me. And she has no stipulations of such monitoring. Besides that, I don't have any comment at this point.
All right, thank you. You'll have an opportunity at the end. First of all, there may be questions for you right now, but after public, the rest of the public has commented, you have a chance to rebut anything that is said. Commissioner Mulder, you have a question?
Through the chair, just correct me if I heard you, you said there's roughly two acres of vegetables in close proximity to this?
There has been historically over two acres, yeah. And it's, the setback from that was only 40 feet from the creek. And it's, it hasn't been used similarly for several years, but I intend to use it for that purpose, again, as I have moved the cannabis off of what had historically been my vegetable garden.
Thank you. And then a second question is I heard you say that the runoff comes from Trinity County and passes by your area. Is that correct?
Yes, and there are other cannabis projects in the Trinity County area of that creek, multiple of.
Thank you.
Are you familiar enough with the wells to know that the groundwater is always sufficient throughout the year?
It seems to be so far. I intend to put in water storage eventually. I didn't want to put that in my application because it's a little tricky given that there's multiple counties involved.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, is any other member of the public care to speak on this matter? Seeing none in the audience, it looks like we have one member of the public. Public 7108, it's your three minutes.
I had an observation of cultivation area verification that started off with an aerial mystery scene. It was 7,390 square feet. And then it goes back and just, you know, there are places where they had pre-existing cultivation areas which suited pictures of water lines and indents in the soil or pots that previously existed. And people first started growing, they were hiding under the trees and trying to camouflage it. And a lot of those sites got abandoned to a new site. And I'm just wondering with this, was there actually this many plants, the 28,850 square feet, was that all pre-existing at the same time? Or was it going back to counting whatever was existing? Because I've seen that happen with other people getting permits. They were told to, you know, put in everything that had ever been used. So, anyway, I'm just wondering if that's a situation here or there was really that much growing at one time? Thank you.
Thank you. Does member of staff wish to address that question or comment from the public?
Sure, through the chair, I could take a shot at it. So, I think what the caller raises is a good question. It's, you know, we've talked about this with some other projects and the cultivation area verification and it's, it's never an exact science, but where it becomes very challenging is where the evidence is that the cultivation was occurring under the trees and hidden, you know, trying to hide from aerial views. And so it has been our practice to look at the evidence that they have, talk to the applicant, try to understand the operation that was occurring from, from their understanding. And if the evidence and the conversation with the applicant appears to plausibly demonstrate that that was occurring, that was the practice to consider that that was the cultivation previous to that. So where there is some evidence, but it's not quite as clear as you might have out in the open, we do tend to rely at least somewhat on the applicant's explanation of what was happening as well.
I guess specifically the question that it raises for me, the public comment, that is, are we using different dates in time? Say you have a better view of one site and you can't tell the other, but then two years later it's clear they're growing somewhere else, but you can't tell about the first area? Or is it all as of a point in time?
It's intended to be all at one point in time. Again, that can be really difficult when your evidence isn't a clear satellite image. But the intention there is that the, it should be the basis, the basis for the cultivation verification should be a single year, a single point in time. So to really get to the point of that or to the answer for that question, I think, is that it is our belief that that much cultivation was occurring in the trees at one point in time prior to 2015.
How much of the total area is stuff that we had to make an educated assumption rather than we could see it with our own two eyes?
I would say the original cav gave a quarter or a third about of this area and then through communication with the applicant and additional evidence and then using a different date and imagery, it was increased to 28,348 square feet with an interim permit. And that included some areas that were measured around the perimeter and other areas that were measured per plant where we counted individual plants and multiplied it by, it was 50 square feet through communication with the applicant.
Can you, you've mentioned additional evidence multiple times. Can you give examples of what that included on this particular project?
So the original image of the cav utilized a Terra Server image from 2015 and then the updated imagery was from Google Earth, I believe 2015. And the applicant also submitted photographs of water lines. It was mostly water lines that supported the evidence of the Gorilla Grow area, but there were some pots and there was some existing plants that helped to justify the 50 square feet per plant.
Can you verify, I would assume, the date on the picture file?
Oh, yes. The image shows that it's a Google Earth 2015 image.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions before we begin our deliberations? I see no other hand, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and turn it back over to the commission for deliberation and discussion. Go ahead.
So, I think staff has already answered this question, but I'm just going to make sure it's on the record correctly. We heard testimony from the applicant that the runoff comes from Trinity County and enters into Humboldt County passing by this site. Do we have any jurisdiction to, other than, as Humboldt County, do we have any jurisdiction to do anything about any runoff coming from Trinity County into Humboldt County?
We do not have any jurisdiction. If we had consent. We do not have any jurisdiction. If we had concerns, we would have the ability to reach out and have a conversation with Trinity County. But we don't have any actual jurisdiction or authority over anything that happens there.
Thank you. And then a follow-up, that jurisdiction lies with the state water board. Is that still correct?
The state water board is the authority over, basically, the public's water and water quality and water quantity. But I think that it is a prerogative of the county and the county planning commission to consider water quality concerns in their review.
Okay. And I have a third follow-up with that. So, from my understanding, we would evaluate the site management plan and see that that follows the general order with the state water board, and if we feel that it is in line with that, that is our evidence to take care of what our jurisdiction is, and then the rest would be left with the water board. Is that correct? I might be fumbling the words there a little bit.
Well, so that is the analysis that we have typically done. I do think if there's concerns that that the county or the planning commission might have over water quality, even if they are complying with the state's requirements, and showing that they're complying with the general order, I think that there is, I think that's a legitimate concern to have questions about.
Thank you.
Just want to point out that there is a hand that came up shortly after you closed public hearing. And the concern is, is that if that's a phone, which it appears to be, and it was delayed in being able to respond, then we precluded their opportunity to make comment.
I did leave public comment open for over five minutes, so that being said, I will grant deference in this situation and reopen public comment for just this one caller, public 9020.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. Yes, there was a technological problem, and I had my hand raised, and then it wasn't. My singular comment is that staff presented that the U.S. Forest Service has not provided any comment on this project, similarly, on many others that are surrounded by U.S. Forest Service property. This is incorrect. U.S. Forest Service has provided multiple letters, including from the forest supervisor, that specifically object to these types of projects traversing Forest Service roads without special use permits. A timber harvest plant? A vegetable garden? Any other commercial use requires a special use permit from the U.S. Forest Service to traverse Forest Service land. This project, similarly, many others, does not have a U.S. Forest Service special use permit. I will refer you to George Frye, who is at the Six Rivers National Forest Office. His number is 707-441-3631. And his email is B F R E Y at F S dot F E D dot U S. And he will provide you with these letters. Thank you so much for this comment.
Speaker, can I ask you a follow-up question, please? Are you still with us?
Who's speaking?
This is Chair Brian Mitchell. I wanted to just ask you if you are speaking as an individual or a representative of the U.S. Forest Service, or an employee thereof?
I don't believe I have to answer that question, and I believe it is also irrelevant.
Have a wonderful day. Any further discussion?
Are you re-closing public commenter?
So closed. Mr. West?
I have a question for staff, if they would be able to respond to that commenter on the letters that he referenced.
Sure. So, I think it's correct that we did say there was no comments received on this project from the U.S. Forest Service. It is also correct that the U.S. Forest Service did provide a comment to the county many years back about their concern with the transportation of cannabis over federal, over the Forest Service roads because of the federal legal status of it. I think we had a, we may have even had a workshop in front of the planning commission at the time where we talked about that letter that they had sent. I think maybe some of you remember. And one of the things that we did work out, we believe, with the Forest Service was that if they had any specific comments or concerns about specific projects, that they would make those specific concerns known to us. So, to the extent that there is a U.S. Forest Service comment on this project, it's really relative to all of the county's cannabis projects.
Well, I guess I would just state that I don't believe that that previous comment was from the Forest Service. It didn't purport to be, and I'm not going to take it as such. A follow-up question for you is, have we ever seen the U.S. Forest Service grant a special permit to use their roads for a cannabis project? Wouldn't that be contrary to the federal scheduling of?
Correct. They would not be able to do that, given the federal status.
Okay, Commissioner O'Neill?
Is it true what he said, that they need to have a permit? And do you require that they provide that permit, like you do with water quality permits?
Well, I don't know if I can answer if it's true that they need to have one. We do not require one, and currently, we understand that if a permit was required, they would be unable to obtain that, given the federal status. And the Forest Service and other federal agencies have made that clear to the county that they do not have the ability to issue any approvals for anything cannabis-related, given the federal legal status.
Further discussion to be had? Motions to be made? Anyone?
I just wanted to comment with respect to the letter we received from Riverwatch, and I think their concerns are addressed in the permit in several different areas. And I'd be happy to point those out. First, I want to just acknowledge the applicant is committing to a timber restocking plan, so they're going to reestablish over an acre of Douglas fir forest. They're going to, they're required to control all refuse in wildlife-proof, wildlife-proof storage containers at all times. They are committed to the use of anticoagulant or denticide. All components of the project are developed, operated, maintained in conformance with the project description, site plan, cultivation operations plan, and these conditions of approval. They will have to, their cannabis cultivation will be in compliance with all laws and regulations set forth in our CMM L U O. They will comply with all statutes, regulations, requirements of the California State Water Resources Control Board and Division of Water Rights. They will maintain enrollment in Tier One or Tier Two certification with the State Water Resources Control Board. They will consent to annual onsite compliance inspection with at least 24 hours' notice. They will refrain from improper storage and use of any fuels, fertilizer, pesticide, fungicide, rotenticide, or herbicide. And they will comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations governing California agricultural employers. So, I believe that the conditions that are imposed on the applicant for this project have the concerns of control of fertilizers well in hand. And if they don't, that our process for inspection and enforcing compliance with these regulations will satisfy any concerns with that respect.
Okay, further discussion before, go ahead, Commissioner West?
I also just wanted to speak to Mr. Delaney's comment. I wish that he was here with us today, or had provided a bit more information about his concerns. It makes it a little bit challenging to consider some of why he feels the fertilizer discharge would be a challenge when there are the conditions that Commissioner Scavdal has read out to us. So I just wanted to note that for the future, if he considers commenting again.
Commissioner Mulder?
So one other, back to this letter that we received, I just read tonight. At the very end, the last sentence, "At the very least, the project should be limited to 10,000 square feet." So it sounds, what I read from this letter is that there's two other permitted 10,000-square-foot grows, and that he would prefer this grow be the same size as the other two. That's the way I read this letter, which is contradictory to the SEQA of our, you know, pre-existing cultivation. So I couldn't support that request. So I'd be ready to move forward, but I'll leave it to someone else to make a motion.
Anyone care to make a motion?
Hold on, I was just trying, just trying to get to the actual language that I don't have in front of me, but I move to approve the conditional use permit for the Enchanted Forest LLC project.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Scavdal, and a second by Commissioner West. Any further comments on the motion? Okay, all in support, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion passes with Commissioner O'Neill objecting. Great. So, the next item on our agenda is going to be the public hearing on coastal advisory dwelling unit ordinance as modified by California Coastal Commission. Just for planning purposes, how long do we expect this presentation to last?
Really would be dependent upon how long the commission wants to talk about it. What we're going to present are the changes that have been recommended by the Coastal Commission. And we can choose to accept or reject those. If we reject them, it won't be certified. So, it does not need to be a long conversation.
Okay. Does anyone need a break before we go on? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Michael Richardson with the Planning Department. This item is Planning Commission's consideration of a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on changes to the coastal zoning regulations to allow accessory dwelling units. The Planning Commission first developed these regulations, developed a version, the original version of the regulations, back in April and May of 2021. There were several public hearings, and that followed several public workshops where we received comments from a wide variety of interests. And your Planning Commission made recommendations to the Board of Supervisors to approve the ordinance, and the Board of Supervisors tinkered with it a little bit, and then passed it on to the Coastal Commission for their consideration. The Coastal Commission did make a finding in February of this year that the ordinance, if it was modified a little bit, would be consistent with the Coastal Act. And so what your commission is looking at right now is whether or not it feels those modifications, if those are in the public interest and consistent with the general plan, consistent with the other portions of the zoning regulations. And if you can make those findings, then you can recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve these modifications. And we believe you can make those findings, and so we're recommending approval of them. So that's about it.
Would you mind just walking us at a very high level, any substantive changes?
Yeah, the the changes are at a high level, identified in the staff report, and I can walk you through those. The commission would like, the Coastal Commission would like the county's regulations to be modified to clarify the public notice and the public hearing procedures for excess redwelling units. And those portions of the county zoning regulations occur in Chapter Two. The Coastal Commission also wanted a definition of junior accessory dwelling units, or JDUs, added. The Coastal Commission wanted text clarifying when a coastal development permit is going to be required for one of these projects. They also wanted a deed restriction to be required to not allow the use of an accessory dwelling unit as a vacation rental. They wanted to strike the allowance to exceed 1,200 square feet with a special permit. They also wanted that ADUs be required to be clustered around the existing development on a parcel where there are prime agricultural soils and timberlands involved. And then finally, the they're recommending that the ordinance be, or they're requiring the ordinance be modified to identify a couple of other situations where a special permit would be required in addition to a coastal development permit. One would be those situations where it's on a property that's subject to future sea level rise hazard. And then, secondly, where there are new wells and/or septic systems that need to be constructed in order to accommodate the accessory dwelling unit, or the junior accessory dwelling unit. So that's a quick rundown of the highlights of the Coastal Commission's requests.
Thank you so much. Question, Commissioner O'Neill?
How long do you have to stay before you're not a transient?
You have to occupy the dwelling for 30 days in order to be considered non-transient.
So if you rented it out for a month at a time, you'd be okay, but you can't put it on like an Airbnb and rent it out for the night, or?
That's correct, yes.
Mr. West?
Can you talk about the process if we decide not to? Can you talk about the process if we decide not to accept the Coastal Commission's requirements? What happens with this after if we do not accept it?
Well, your recommendation would be considered by the Board of Supervisors. And if they chose to not go forward with the recommendations of the Coastal Commission, then we would be essentially abandoning that effort. And either we would, at the direction of the Board of Supervisors, initiate a more comprehensive look at what the Coastal Commission was seeking and doing our best to develop a new ordinance that gets closer to what they were asking for, but maybe has some local flavor to it. And then we would submit that to the Coastal Commission for certification again.
What Coastal Act policy did they find in conflict with the special permit allowance to build larger than 1,200 square feet?
I think it was related to the affordability of the units. And state law is pretty clear that they are, the state is pushing for these ADUs to be more affordable. And if they are smaller in size, then they would, in theory, be cheaper to construct and could be offered at a lower price. And that would, that would fill a need. Right now, the county's producing or permitting quite a few larger homes that are available or affordable to the higher income categories. But we have a deficit in terms of what the need is when it comes to building affordable housing. And so the Coastal Commission, I believe, was looking at that and really wanting to hold the line consistent with the state's position on that.
Now, this is a hypothetical question, but if we were to accept all the changes but suggest an alternative to eliminating the special permit for a larger one, but adding a requirement that there be a deed restriction so that that larger than 1,200-square-foot home must be rented at a rate that's considered affordable, do you think that would meet the same requirement or not?
You know, it's possible. The way that the Coastal Commission staff has characterized their, the Coastal Commission's certification is there are no changes that can be made to it in order to remain certified by the Coastal Commission. So there's really no ability for this, as they characterize it, there's no ability for us to substitute other measures like that. But I could have another conversation with the Coastal Commission staff if you like.
Director Ford.
Yeah, this may be a little bit incongruent with what Mr. Richardson just said, but I did have a separate conversation with the Coastal Commission staff about this. And the Coastal Commission, their ability to regulate affordability was taken out of the Coastal Act back in the 90s. This is, this provision, their concern is protection of coastal resources. So really what they want to do is minimize the footprint of development in order to maximize protection of coastal resources. That's what this is really about, is minimizing the size of the development in order to protect the coastal resources, and that is their charge.
That's understandable. I guess I just want to voice my concern. As a father of four, we live in a 1,400-square-foot home, and I have children, arms and legs sticking out of windows for us all to squeeze in there. So there are times when 1,200 feet doesn't work, and it's not necessarily because people are rich or something like that. So it concerns me that they've so greatly tied our hands when there's other avenues to create affordable housing, and the 1,200 seems arbitrary.
Well, I could add, and one of the things I left off, forgive me for this and forgive me for jumping back in, but is that 1,200 square feet actually comes out of state law? That say if we were not to have adopted any ADU ordinance, state law would mandate that we allow ADUs up to 1,200 square feet. So it's not an arbitrary number. It's grounded in state law.
Just a response, I don't think you, any more than you can monitor the water contamination that you could monitor what people charge for rent. And there is such a thing as low-income housing vouchers that can supplement a low-income person's rent. I'll disclose I'm building an ADU, and it costs more to build the ADU for one bedroom than it did my whole three-bedroom house because the cost now is so high. So there is really no such thing as affordable housing that you're building right now. There's housing that, you know, you can provide to low-income individuals if they're getting a voucher to supplement the difference between what they can afford, which is 30% of their income versus the fair market value or what you're going to need to recover to pay your loan, if you have a loan, or repay you for that investment. So I would be against regulating that because there's already measures in place to help families that are low-income rent at fair market value.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Skavdahl?
Yeah, I just want to point out that next month, it'll be two years since the Board of Supervisors approved the coastal accessory dwelling unit regulations. And that just seems to me like an amazing amount of time to get back from the Coastal Commission's seven clarifications. Having said that, I'd be reticent to propose any changes to these and go back through that process again. Because I'm presuming that we're not doing any coastal develop dependent ADUs until we get this regulation approved by the Board of Supervisors and the Coastal Commission.
Actually, the state mandates that we allow ADUs consistent with state law. And so when somebody proposes a project, an ADU in the coastal zone right now, we are looking at the state regulations for our guidance.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any further questions for staff before I open up to public comment? Seeing none, I would ask, is anyone on Zoom care to make a public comment? Seeing none, I will now close public comment and turn it back over to Commissioner Mulder.
So Commissioner Skavdahl made a good point. I do remember back when this was going through, I wasn't up here, but I was following this. As much as I, I just want to know the process. I want to go back to what Commissioner West, the question, can we recommend this on to the Board of Supervisors and then they can decide which of these seven things they agree with or don't agree with? Or if we recommend it as is? Because from my understanding, we can recommend something and then they can change it. Is that correct or incorrect?
Yeah, that's right. You're making a recommendation, and they're free to choose to take that or not.
Okay. I'm just, for me, I'm having a little bit of a hard time, I think actually with seven, actually a couple of them, to be honest with you, but seven, because it just looks like it's just adding more work to the director. As far as the sea level rise, I haven't read Section 69.05.6.1D, but it just, it seems, do we have like a map that's like, hey, this falls in sea level rise and has to, like a topography map? Or is that a case-by-case basis that staff's going to have to go through this 75-year horizon sea level rise projection?
We have the information that we need in order to develop the map. The map that we have right now is not tied to this standard.
Okay.
And just to clarify, we have to deal with sea level rise for any new development in that area anyway. So this isn't asking something extra, it's just making it consistent with the rest of our LCP. Okay. Further questions or motions? Someone do one or the other.
I have a question. I haven't made a motion before. If I make a motion, it would be just to adopt the resolution, or do I need to include other language? If I, oh, it's up there.
They give us the motion.
Oh, perfect. I thought I saw it, but I didn't. Okay. I'd like to motion that the Planning Commission, based on the evidence in their staff report and public testimony, make all the required findings and adopt the attached resolution recommending that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors find that the proposed amendments are exempt from California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 2108.5 and 2108.0.9 of the Public Resources Code and Sections 15250, 15251F, and 15265 of the SEQA Guidelines, and adopt the proposed amendments to the coastal zoning regulations.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
Did we ask for a public comment?
We did.
Okay, I missed that.
Okay. All in support, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners. And on a personal note, I'm retiring at the end of this month, and it's been a great pleasure working with some of you more than others. And just really appreciate the work that you do. And it's a challenge for us to keep up with you, and so you deserve to be complimented for your acuity and your acumen and all of the hard work you do. It's just really wonderful to see and witness.
You shouldn't be saying nice things about us. It should be us saying them about you. Michael, we've known each other for quite a long time. We've been out finding lots together and looking at what's developable and not. And I wish you all the best in retirement. The county is going to have such large shoes to fill. It's probably going to take several people to do it. So if there's no director report tonight, I would like to go ahead and adjourn the meeting in honoring Michael Richardson. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a nice retirement.
Congratulations, but I was so sad.
Recording stopped.